We're gonna call the meeting to order October twenty eighth, six o'clock P M. Just really quickly, um. I'm here by informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. Uh, also that on March twenty nine, twenty twenty three, Governor Healy signed into law an act relative to an extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which among other things extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law on March thirty one, twenty five. Specifically, this extension allows the public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any new changes to open meeting law other than extending the expiration date on the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty one, twenty three to March thirty one, twenty twenty five. We have, well, if the clerk can, um, call the roll. Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Present.
No one is, uh, online virtually, so any votes taken will just all in favor opposed to, um, one on one unless any participant that's not here comes online. I'll stand for the pledge allegiance.
So you're one of you can lead it. You're a student who can lead it.
Ready? Ready when you are.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we dive right into the agenda, I do just wanna take, uh, a pause, moment of silence. Two people that have, uh, recently passed away, one of which is our former school committee member Peggy Beloys and also the sister of our current school committee member, uh, Ronnie Callamore. What's your sister's name, Ronnie?
Dale Flanagan, Mrs. Flanagan.
Thank you, Ronnie. Um, if you wanna say anything before we take a moment of silence.
I just wanna thank all the members for good doances.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, first item on our agenda, uh. It's correct? Yeah, election of vice chair pro term for October twenty eight, twenty four, regular meeting. Holy School Committee as per policy B D A. Yes.
I make a motion for, uh, our mayor Joshua Garcia. Be the, uh, my chair pro tem.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Great. I accept. All those in favor?
Aye.
Gotta gavel.
And I apologize. We do have a public comment period. Um, we just took care of agenda item. Number one, excuse me, our vice chair is not here today, who normally chairs our meetings on my behalf. Um, uh, but, uh, let's go back to public comment. Any members of the public wishing to comment on any item that's on our agenda tonight?
Yes, you have one.
One. Just come forward, name, address, and I think you have, uh, is it a minute or two minutes? Two minutes? Set the timer. It's okay. Oh.
My name is Marcus Holt. My address is forty eight Feeding Hills Road, Westfield. I'm a public school teacher here in Holyoke. Um, I've been a teacher here for seventeen years, fifteen at Dean, two at Holyoke High. And I wanted to talk today about the entrance policy for entry into Dean. Um, recently we established a lottery, which is a good thing because we didn't think meritocracy really allowed equal access to everybody in the city. Uh, those of us who've been here for a while and saw the lean years thought maybe meritocracy, but lottery is good. We like it. We're supporting it. We think it's best for everybody. Um. We remember the bad times when students used to be counseled. Perhaps you didn't wanna go to Dean if you're academically successful. Uh, the superintendent tells us a story of how it happened to him. So we know this was a thing. And with all years I have here, I saw those years. Uh, we saw it get better, much better. Now we have a waiting list at Dean. Now this brings us to what happened a few weeks ago. There were students transferred to Dean from Holyoke High. The I'm, I'm a bit of a speculation here because complete transparency wasn't always there for student safety and student security. They don't seem to have been selected directly from the list of lottery. Bit of a speculation, but as a teacher here, I see the habits of student learning in the school every day. And so it was a concern to us, those who work at Dean and say, hold it, we thought we had a lottery. And so if we're not following the lottery, which we may or may not be, I, I have to speculate some, like I say, this is not complete transparency. You all could dig deeper. That's really concerning to us because for years not being academically successful at your original institution was caused to move you to Dean. That can't be anymore. That, that's, that can't be. So I wanted to come here tonight and ask you all to make sure that whatever the city is doing, and I know people around the city have been informed and they're working through the process. I wanna make sure you all were also involved and finding out to make sure this doesn't happen again. If what I suspect, just a suspicion, if my suspicion is true, I really, really love my school and I don't want it to go down here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comments. Uh, agenda item number three here, student showcase. Do we have any? None today. Uh, communications reports, student reports, Hoyokai School North Student Representative.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Rodriguez and this month we've had, we have, we are preparing for our student summit in December. Uh, just this week we had a meeting with student leaders at Holyoke High School, getting them ready for our summit where they will be going with a group of students and adults to um, a hall in Springfield to go over ways in which we can sort of, or we can figure out what's going wrong, like what's going on with our high schools and how we can improve it. Uh, student leaders will be leading groups of other students and adults. Their goal is to get to the, like, figure out what's, get the student opinion on what we need to change and what they feel is most important. Uh, we also have our upcoming play, uh, Miss Nelson is Missing, which will be premiering November thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. Tickets will be going on sale soon, so we hope to see you guys there. Finally, we have upcoming tryouts for some of our winter sports. We will be having indoor track, girls and boys v basketball, and, uh, coed swimming. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the report. Hoyokai School Dean Campus.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd quickly like to apologize for my lapse, absence of the last couple of meetings. The first one, I had a family emergency and the second one, my best friend asked me to walk him out in the field for his field hockey senior night, so I couldn't pass that up. Um, so, but I'm back and to my left I have Jesse, um, who may or may not be my predecessor coming up soon. So, um, let's get to the news. I said, you're not getting off easy. I saw that. I saw that smile. I'm, I'm training her.
Um.
First of all, open house was a hit. Over ninety families visited our schools and enjoyed some food.
We have empanadas, quesitos, and tacoitos.
And, um, all of our health system seniors are out on co-op. If any of you are at Holyoke Medical Center, come see me. Um, which is a Dean Tech first, the first shop to have all of its seniors out on co-op. Yeah. The official design of our twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Dean Tech yearbook is Diary of a Wimpy Kid, similar to Diary of a Wimpy Kid. Orders will be taken now. Um, Pink All Day was on October eighteenth, which was very su- successful with almost all students participating and bringing awareness and hope for breast cancer awareness. On October twenty fifth, Dean Tech had its second annual Halloween dance hosted by the class of twenty twenty six. Eighty tickets were sold. And tomorrow at trunk or treat, student council will be at North Campus. This year's theme is Dean Tech Laboratories. The Hawk will be making an appearance. Um, with fall sports ending, we honor two of our seniors, Lasca Melendez Rodriguez for girls varsity field, uh, volleyball and Aiden McCarthy for field hockey. See their video tributes on our Dean Instagram page. Class of twenty twenty five kicked off their senior events with their senior sunrise at Holyoke Row. Shout out to Mr. Cream for waking up, waking up to be there and celebrating with them. On December sixth, our, a wrestling event called Brave in the Heart will be held in our gymnasium. The nonprofit organization Headlocks for Humanity and will be donating fifty percent of the proceeds to our nine C T E programs as well as eleven-year-old Andrew Wilson. We are looking forward, we are looking for donations, sponsors, and vendors for the meaningful event. Please reach out to Ms. Amanda Thomas, our advanced manufacturing teacher for more information. And, yeah. Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for those reports. Moving on into the agenda, the vice chair did leave a note here on the agenda of some vice chair reports, reminding everybody, November twelfth, at six thirty P M, we are having air, our superintendent evaluation training. This training is gonna take place immediately following our regular, uh, school board meeting of the Hoyokai School Committee, which will start at six. I also have here in our notes, um, she left us a subcommittee appointed list that's updated. Um, should I go through that or does everyone know the assignment? Do you want me to go through it?
Yes, for the public, I think we should. Thank you.
Want me to go through a public, okay. Uh, just really quickly, um, local control subcommittee, we have chair Yadilet Rivera Cologne, committee members, uh, Devon Sheehan and myself. Uh, on our finance committee, Wellahan continues to chair, come, and also includes committee members Gladys LeBron Martinez and William Callamore. And then in our joint city council school committee, uh, William Callamore chairs it. Committee members include uh, John Wellahan and Rosalie Tensley Williams. In our policy and governance subcommittee, chair is Ellie Wilson and committee members include Rosalie Tensley Williams and Gladys LeBron Martinez. And then lastly, in our leadership accountability and measurement, measurements subcommittee, chairing that subcommittee is Yadilet Rivera Cologne and it includes committee members Devon Sheehan and Orlando Isasa. Good job. Got it. Uh, into new business, Hoyokai Dean Campus admission policy.
Motion to refer the policy of Holyoke High School Dean Technical to the Policy and Governance Subcommittee for discussion and recommendations.
Motion's been made. Yadilet seconded by Rosalie Tensley Williams. Discussion.
So from my understanding, the subcommittee has already reviewed the policy. Um, and it was the updated policy from, uh, my, um, communication with Dr. Mahoney. There was no changes since the subcommittee reviewed it. Um, we are pleased, the subcommittee, uh, was pleased with how, uh, the point system was working for getting entries into the system. We found it to be, um, an equitable way um, to measure students and for those students who have, um, higher rankings to get more opportunities in that, um, drawing, I'm gonna say raffle. Thank you. Um, so I, there was, there was no concerns on our part. Um. So I don't believe it does need to be referred to the Policy and Governance Subcommittee. The policy as it is written.
Okay. Was there anybody else? Doctor?
That was gonna be my question. If there were any changes from the last time we discussed it.
But, uh, there were no changes there. You know, we have been talking about considering that, that STEM is gonna be, um, vacating Dean. Um, with the brand new middle school that, that we're building. And there, there was some discussion about, uh, putting a team together to take a look at the current policy and really be strategic and think about how we wanna grow in terms of student numbers from the current, um, from the current enrollment that we have at Dean. You know, I think it's important. You know, uh, we do have Holyoke High School and Dean as, I know there are two separate campuses, but you know, holistically, we need to make sure that as we grow, grow Dean, we think about the impacts that, um, you know, that it has on the North Campus and what things can be offered at Dean and what things can be offered at Holyoke High. Um, to make sure, you know, that, that both campuses offer what we as a committee and we as a community wanna see. So um, I am, I'm definitely, um, putting a team together to think through that, right? Um, you know, I just, just, uh, as a, as an example, if we, if we wanna grow Dean with two hundred more kids, um, that has a significant impact on the programming that could be offered at Holyoke High. What AP courses, what early college, what, um, you know, just in general, like, can we offer three academies like we're offering right now? So we, we just really need to be thoughtful in how we're, how we're gonna do that in a way, um, that, that, you know, we're aware of, of what we wanna see in both campuses. So um, I will be putting together a, a team of folks to really look at that for next year. And I think that, um, that would be an appropriate time to then talk about, you know, what changes we're recommending to the existing policy. And in the policy, there is a section in there that talks about transferring from one campus to another. So we do have the ability to transfer from one campus to another, even if it's not off of the waitlist. But it, if, if it is something that this committee wants to talk about, I think it would be appropriate to bring any changes that we're recommending to the policy subcommittee in addition to that existing mechanism that we already have in the admissions policy that allows us to transfer from one campus to another.
Is there a reason why there's the perception of not following the drawing?
Um, I don't know. I, I, I do know that in the policy, it, it, uh, there, there is, uh, a mechanism in the policy that allows you to transfer students from one campus to another. And, you know, I'm, I just wanna say it, like, I've always said it to this committee. I've always said it in, 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 um, it's written in our strategic plan at the center of every decision we make is what we believe is in the best interests of kids. And sometimes that means adults aren't happy with those, uh, with those, uh, decisions. But I feel good about the decisions that were made for the kids that we have transferred. I'm not happy with, uh, you know, that there's definitely some things that we have to button up in terms of how those things are executed, how they're communicated. You know, how the transition is gonna work. I think that this, you know, that process has really pushed our thinking and making sure that we're really thoughtful. And whenever we are making a decision like that, rooted in what's good for an individual student, um, that, you know, we're, we're making sure that the collaboration between both campuses, you know, if there's accommodations that need to be made, that counselors know about it. And I think that, you know, in terms of how those, how that was executed, um, a few weeks ago, that is something that we definitely need to button up. But, um, I'm confident that it's rooted in, in, you know, what was best for, for those kids at the time. And no, you know, I, it, it, it is not our intention to revert back to where we were, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago where, uh, where, where, you know, we're called Dean a dumping ground. That's not, that's not the intention here. The intention is, um, there are some students that we thought would have a significant, uh, better chance at engaging in their learning and more successful here at the Dean Campus. And that's what, you know, that's what was grounded in those decisions. And, um, you know, we, we, process wise, we just need to button that up. And I'm happy to work with the committee and with the team to talk about what that process looks like. Um. So.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wilson.
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Callamore at the moment.
Okay, Mr. Callamore and then Orlando Isasa.
But for, uh, the whole city where Dean School, formerly Hoyokai Trade High School, uh, had an excellent, excellent, uh, athletic program with their own name on it. And it built, built confidence in, in the Dean School. And I just wanted you to think about how good it would be to possibly go back to, uh, an athletic program just Hoyokai School rather than just two schools.
Thank you, Mr. Callamore. Isasa.
Why we perhaps consider therefore a some kind of discretion in the policy for the superintendent, uh, under specific, uh, conditions and circumstances at his discretion to allow transfer kind of aside the regular policy?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, in the policy, it doesn't, it, it says that, you know, in order to transfer from one campus to another, that the leaders will get together with the Edsels and under extenuating circumstances ma- make a decision like that. Um, you know, again, grounded in what, what we believe.
So that's already clear.
That's already in there. Um, what, what is not in there is exactly what that process looks like. And, and that, you know, one of the things that I wanna do moving forward is make sure that we're really tight on when a decision like this is made. Um, what is, you know, what are, what is our expectation for the principals? What, what's our expectation for communicating with staff? What's our expectation to make sure things happen before a transition happens so that, you know, it could be the best transition possible for these students. But I do, you know, I have one student in particular that I can name that I know, you know, she hadn't, and I won't name her name, but she hadn't gotten into, uh, Dean, uh, a couple of years ago. And I was, I was there on the day that she received notice that she hadn't gotten into Dean. And, um, she was crying. She was like in tears at the time. Um, she happened to be at Sullivan School. I was in the hallway and I asked her, why are you crying? And she said, you know, there's nothing more that I wanted than to be, you know, to go to Dean and be an electrician. And I, I was heartbroken and I knew, you know, this particular student had, uh, a lot of challenges. And I knew that, um, at the end of the day, had she not gone to Dean, that, you know, um, her chances at engaging in her learning and, and being successful would have definitely suffered. And happy that, like, I'm hearing, you know, I visit her every now and then, and I hear stories from her and I know there's another teacher at Sullivan that was advocating for her to get into Dean as well. And we're just hearing so many things that she's, like, she's getting all A's. She's really engaged in her learning. She's super happy at Dean. And, you know, that was an example of like, at, we just felt at the time that this was the right thing for that particular student and um, made the decision. And, and honestly, like, if we hadn't made that decision, things would have been really different in this particular student's life.
So I'm gonna go to Evan, then I'm gonna go to Mrs. Wilson, uh, just but out of point of, um, clarification of the order. Um, and I believe, uh, Madam Vice Chairwoman put this on the agenda because a member of the public that we heard tonight had brought up some, some points he wanted us to look into. And, and I just had a question, the chair of our, um, policy subcommittee, do you feel that the point that is looking to be clarified or addressed that we're discussing here for this particular order needs to go to committee for further discussion and a report back?
It's clearly, um, stated that in exceptional circumstances, transfers of students not on a waitlist and or during the course of the first or second trimester would be a consensus decision by campus principals and E D S L. I guess the only clarification I need to know is what is an E D S L? So that could be, uh, clearly defined in that document, um, before using the abbreviation. But otherwise, the policy does speak to under, um, exceptional circumstances. So there would be, in my viewpoint, I'm not sure about the rest committee, but speaking for myself, there'd be no reason to send it back.
Okay, before you answer the clarification on the acronyms, Mr. Kennedy.
Um. I, Super Minnesota, I heard, uh, your story was, yeah, I think that we all can say, can see, like, that student is definitely going to receive a better education because of the decision that was made. Um, but I, I would just like to, you know, think about the, the student at the top of the waitlist who was in the same situation. Um, who, you know, wanted to get into Dean and they didn't. And then, uh, someone got moved above them. I understand if it's extenuating circumstances. I, I, I do. Um, but I think that you, you, you were right in that the communication in these situations are important without compromising the importance of the privacy of the situation. Did that make sense? That was just words salad. Also, I have another question regarding that. Um, actually, no, I don't. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, Soto, can you respond to?
Yeah, the E D S L is the executive director of school leadership. Essentially, it is, uh, Jackie Glashine and Sarita Gravlin. Um, they, they, you know, they each have a group of schools that they supervise and help support in our, our leaders and becoming stronger instructional leaders and, and becoming, you know, growing in their practice as school leaders. So, uh, you know, they would, they would work together in this scenario with the principals and, and determine that. And I, like I said, I, I just think that's an area where I know we can, we definitely have to get tighter on that for sure.
Mrs. Wilson. Good. Gladys LeBron Martinez.
Um, in this, in this conversation, you also share something about, uh, putting together a group that is gonna help you for the expansion, I guess, of Dean. And you're referring to be able to accommodate more students. Is that the purpose that, if I'm understanding correctly?
Yeah, so right now we have, you know, well over two hundred students that, uh, are in the Dean's building, uh, under STEM Middle School. So next year, uh, when we build, when the new middle school is built, kids from Metcalf and kids that are currently here in a middle school are gonna all go to that new school. So it's a great opportunity for us, you know, right now, we, we capped the, uh, enrollment at a hundred and ten as part of the lottery for freshmen. We could think about in the, in, um, moving forward, like, of taking more than a hundred and ten kids. And what I'm suggesting is that we do that in a way that, that, that makes sense for both campuses. So, um, you know, I am going to be putting a team together to think through, how can we do that? Let's say we wanna grow Dean by two hundred kids. How could we do that in a way that has a minimal impact on the amount of resources that, that are at, and offerings that are at the North Campus? Because at the end of the day, we're a community that's funded at the very bare minimum net school spending requirement. And while we would love to, um, offer everything and anything to every school, like, when we move two hundred kids from one campus to another, all of those resources move with those students, right? So, um, when that happens, you know, what happens to the programming that we have? Can we have three academies? Can we offer dual enrollment like we're currently offering dual enrollment? You know, what impact is that gonna have on athletics, if any? Like, we, we just have to be really strategic and think through. And I also know that, you know, at the, you know, one thing that is, is, is definitely, uh, concerning to me and concerning to the state, like, there's a board meeting at five o'clock today to talk about C T E e-programming. And one of the biggest concerns that they raised at the state level was access to C T E programming for special education students. And in, in Dean, we do not have any sub-separate. All of our high school sub-separate special education programs live in the North Campus. So essentially, if you are in a sub-separate program, like, you are completely excluded from being able to access C T E programming. We have to think about that. We have to name that. We have to think about that. And we have to think about how could we like, remove those barriers? And it might mean, you know, instead of all of the programs living, like, maybe they both should live at both campuses so that students that are, uh, in sub-separate programming have equal access to, uh, to C T E programming. Should that be the path? Should that be the path they want to choose in Hoyokai Public Schools? So I want to put a team together to really think through that and to address, you know, you know, we did make that change to the admissions policy last year. Um, and as we think about growing Dean, I just want to be really thoughtful, um, through an equity lens, grounded in what's best for students, and also grounded in looking at both campuses holistically and making sure that we're really thoughtful in how we grow Dean moving forward.
Rosalie Williams, did you have something? Mr. Kennedy, then Rosalie Tensley.
So sorry, this is the time for my question. As a part of growing Dean, does that include opening additional CTE shops? That as one of our, um, board members suggested, that maybe might compete with other districts? I mean, off the top of my head, I think we have four empty shops. Um, and when we add more students, I think personally, I think it would be a good idea to add more shops as well.
Yeah, that should absolutely be a part of the conversation. I don't know that a big change like that would be for next year, but we have to plan on, you know, whenever you want to open a, a new shop, Mr. Kennedy, you have to do a ton of re- there's a whole process you got to go through with Desi. Do a ton of research. You gotta, you gotta name like what offerings are in the region and.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to snap your fingers. I'm just asking if it's going to be a part of the conversation.
It will absolutely be a part of the conversation. So there'll be some shorter term things in that planning, like, what do we want to do for next year? And then, you know, what are some longer term things that we want to lean into?
Tensley Williams.
Mr. Soto, um, concerning our football team, do we have a medical trainer? Because I guess the two games ago, someone got hurt and they had to use one from the.
We have a medical trainer, yes.
We want to thank you, and you're right. We do want to stick to the, uh, agenda item at hand. And remember, we still have a motion on the table, and the motion is that the school committee refer the admission policy of Hoyokai, Dean Tech to the Policy and Governance Subcommittee for discussion and recommendations if warranted. Were there any other discussions? Rivera Cologne, Doctor.
I was the originator of the motion. I withdrew my motion.
The origin of the motion has withdrawn the motion.
Second that.
Do we have to do the, I think she just withdrew it.
Okay, so we've got to.
Unless there's a new motion on the, uh, agenda item. All right, uh, seeing no other discussion there. Orders, um, we have here an order introduced by committee member John Willehan that the receiver superintendent provide an update to the school committee on activities done throughout the district to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th to October 15th. Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I didn't want to, I provided, uh, an update in your packet. Different schools did different things and the district had, you know, we, we did different things in our social media accounts. Um, you know, celebrating different, uh, people in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. And schools were really creative in how they celebrated this, but I provided all that information in your pa- packets. Um, we weren't like really strict in like, here's how you're going to do it. Each principal was able to be creative. And if you walk around our hallways, you'll see some of those, um, celebrations on our walls at different schools. And, um, you know, if you pay attention to our social media accounts and, and what we post on our website, you can see different ways that we, you know, we celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month.
Mr. Willehan, order.
Yeah, thank you for the information. You know, um, I just think it's important that the district knows, you know, what's going on at each school. I know, um, you know, the parents might, the parents of a certain school might know what's happening in their school, but they don't know what's happening in the other schools. I think the public might know some of the stuff is ongoing. I, um, I was aware of some of the, um, uh, some of the programs just by reading the paper and, um, um, social media. But again, um, these are issues that the public should be aware of, just to show what the district is doing uh, for, uh, the, uh, whole month. I know Ms., uh, Mrs., um, Rivera Cologne was, was in one of the bullet points too. So, um, I just want to thank you for the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willehan. Orlando?
Just a minor question about language. In talking about Hispanic Heritage Month, uh, are we talking about the non-Spanish speaking countries as well? Like, uh, Brazil or not included?
Yeah, I think, uh, part, different schools, like I said, are celebrating a lot of Hispanic culture, so.
Brazil's in there.
Brazil's in there. Colombia's in there, like.
It should be Latino rather than Hispanic, because they have really nothing to do with Spain. I mean, historically, yes.
I think they, yeah, they're just following, you know, the, it's, it's designated Hispanic Heritage Month. I don't think we, and, and I, and I do go to the events when I get invited and, and it's clear, like, oh, you see all the, all the flags. And I believe Brazil's one of them that was in the bunch. But, uh, that's getting into the technicality of the history of it all. Yeah, 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 I know, I hear you. Um, was this complied with, um, Council of Willehan, committee member Willehan? All right, updates from committees. So committee reports. First up, Policy and Governance Subcommittee.
So we are having two meetings in the month of November. Um, we're going to be reviewing Section A and Section B. Section, Section A is the foundations of basic commitments. And Section B will be the Board Governance and Operations. Um, and I believe we're going to have another topic. Ah, the yonder policy procedure. Um, and we may have to move that to another date because, uh, the principal from Hoyokai School North is not available that evening. And I wanted to make sure that, um, she's, you know, available to speak, uh, to that, uh, matter. So, and then on November 20th, uh, which is a Wednesday, we're going to do Section C, the General School Administration, and Section D Fiscal Management. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Uh, we have now Finance and Operations Subcommittee. Mr. Willehan.
Thank you. Yeah, the, um, the committee, um, is planning on meeting, uh, the first full week of November.
Thank you, Mr. Willehan.
And, um, again, we're looking forward the survey to be returned for the, um, for the membership here in our room, I just, on what their thoughts and their pri- priorities are for the budget moving forward. So I think you've all been emailed, emailed that. So I think the responses are going to you, Mr. Soto.
Yeah, the responses are going to myself and Mr. Mangano. And, um, we just want to make sure we collect all of them and then bring them back to the Subcommittee, um, for, for discussion and then, uh, discussion at the full committee as well. So I will work with, uh, uh, Ms. LaFave, uh, to make, and, and yourself, to make sure that that happens once we get all the feedback from everyone.
I forgot whether there was a deadline for the responses.
Um, it was sent in an email. I don't have it off the top of my head, but, um.
So if the membership can get those to us, um, sooner than later, and then we can, um, discuss them in committee, and then we'll bring them forward back here. Thank you.
November 4th.
The deadline.
Perfect.
Dr. Thank you, Mr. Willehan. Uh, we have now Joint City Council School Committee Subcommittee. Mr. Calamore.
At this time, we haven't set up a date yet, but I'm going to sit with Mildred shortly and discuss this.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Willehan. Mr. Calamore. Um, all right, so Local Control Subcommittee, Dr. Yadali Rivera Cologne.
Our next meeting is this Wednesday, the 30th, and it will be all in person. I'm very excited about that.
Commissioners coming in person.
Commissioner is going to be in person.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
Here. Thank you so much, Doctor. We have now, uh, Leadership Accountability and Measurement Subcommittee.
So we're meeting in November 20th, and our first thing that we're going to be doing is finalizing the survey for, for the middle school name, and then we'll go from there. Thank you so much.
Progress. Ongoing Business, MASC Resolutions. Have an action item if anybody wants to make a motion. Who is the make? You?
Well, there's discussion to be had about this. It's not an emotion at, um, we've already as a group, um, discussed the, uh, Resolution One. Uh, well, no, we haven't. Hold on, let me make sure. I'm just going to the, uh, um, so we have not actually. So, um, Resolution One, um, um, so my understanding was, let me back up for a minute. At our last meeting, um, our Vice Chair asked us to review the, um, resolutions in order for, um, you to inform me how to vote, or the delegate, on behalf of our district. So the first resolution is a development of an alternative to the high stakes MCAS test. It is not, um, the replacement of it, just so you know, they're two separate issues. So I'm just going to read the therefore. Um, so therefore be resolved, um, that the MAC urges Massachusetts to develop a wider, more consensus-built strategy for an evaluation system with meaningful input from legitimate stakeholders. That, um, that MAC urges the state legislature to launch a comprehensive evaluation to in- investigate the extent of biases pertaining to the MCAS testing and make these public. And that MAC urges Massachusetts to enact a moratorium, um, on MCAS testing effective immediately. That we urges, um, we, uh, MAC urges Massachusetts to develop an alternative to the high stakes MAC testing. So it's different than what's going to be on the ballot. I just wanted to clarify that. Um, so my question, I guess there is, um, are we, should we take a vote? You know, to support the resolution, um, individually, so we, I know which way to go?
So what's the, uh, how quickly do you need this?
I need, well, it was on the last agenda, so we could review it because our meeting is next week. So that's why it's important. I need it this evening. I'm looking for guidance because I can vote how I feel, but that's not appropriate since I represent our district.
Okay, so, um, Mrs. Wilson, our delegate's looking for guidance, uh, I think is fair because she's representing our body and wants to make sure she's representing it well. So is there any, um, feedback that anybody wants to give to Mrs. Wilson?
Oh, my question, again, I'm asking questions because I know the public is listening, and this is very important for us to understand. So this resolution is the one presented by the MAC? They're, they're the ones who did this in addition to this vote coming up and the question?
There are two different topics. MAC, let me clarify, that Massachusetts Association for School Committees. We, um, is the body that governing, uh, school committees in Massachusetts. And as a group, um, the Resolutions Committee came forward with several resolutions, and this is the first. And so it's, in this resolution, it's saying that Massachusetts should stop, um, giving the MCAS, look into the biases or potential biases of the test, and then also develop an alternative. So it is not anything based with our vote coming up, um.
That makes it clear. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Isaza.
How does it differ from the ballot question?
The ballot question is, um, speaks to the fact that it's no longer going to be a requirement for graduation, um, the MCAS exam. Passing the MCAS exam is currently a requirement in order to get a high school diploma. What, what, so if the ballot question passes, and at some point, there is no longer a graduation requirement for the MCAS, there is still going to be MCAS administered. The state uses it as a tool for comparing districts, um, get, you know, gaining information and insight. So what this is saying is, um, is that, um, you know, it doesn't, that the, you know, our job is to meet the education program, program, programming for a variety of students. Uh, we nurture and support our students. You know, we don't want to narrow the focus of instruction. And so that's why it's saying that we urge them to stop, um, administering the MCAS immediately, look into information to see if there is a bias, and develop an alternative to an MCAS test.
So the alternative is really the key?
I don't believe so. I, I don't think it's, the alternative is the key to it. It's just one of the pieces. Because it's asking for, um, let me look back at this. I apologize. It's asking for stakeholders, legitimate stakeholders, to help develop and review the, well, to review the testing, the evaluation system, and, um, asking the state to get input from legitimate stakeholders. It's urging to launch the evaluation. Um, and it's urging Massachusetts to enact a moratorium on MCAS testing effective immediately. And it's urging Massachusetts to develop an alternative.
Mr. Calamore, then Mr. Kennedy.
Are you looking for a motion or no motion at all, just our own individual?
I guess I would take a motion that we vote in, that we vote in favor of this.
I'll, I'll move that we vote in favor of the MAC Resolution.
Mr. Calamore made motion seconded by Mr. Isaza. Any further discussion? Or your thought, Kennedy, unless you want to, is this appropriate? Okay, further discussion, Kennedy.
Um, no, no, I was just, um, obviously, I, you know, I think it's very clear, my belief on MCAS here in this room. So yes, no, I, I, as a student who doesn't get a vote in this motion, I think that it is very important that regardless of whether the ballot goes yea or nay, um, here in Massachusetts, that we look for an alternative in MCAS. Obviously, if it was up to me, I would use my magical powers and snap it gone. But, um, yeah, um, but if we can't do that, and if it comes down to the fact that people in Massachusetts vote to keep a standardized test, which has a requirement for graduation, then I think that we definitely need to find a solid alternative. I would also recommend that we, uh, clarify the definition of, is it legitimate? Legitimate stakeholders, um, in that process? Because I, you know, what is a legitimate, legitimate stakeholder? Who is the one who's going to be making this decision? Is it going to be the people who made the MCAS? Um, so I think that would be important to clarify.
Really good point. Great. Rosalie, Tensley Williams.
The reason I disagree with giving an MCAS test, if students have four years of high school, now, one test is going to prove whether they can graduate or not, that does not make sense. Some people cannot take tests. Now, if they're taking quizzes and having tests all along from the eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, why would you give them a test to see if they're going to graduate? That's, that's not right, and I disagree with that test.
Thank you. Any other, uh, discussions on a motion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So move.
On to number two.
On to number two.
Number two is, um, is the Resolution Two is to increase the compulsory attendance age. Um, so, uh, I'm just going to go to the therefor's. Uh, the MSC recommends that Massachusetts Legislature increase the compulsory attendance age from 16 to 18.
You're looking for feedback on that too?
I, we, yes, we'd, I'd like a vote, so, um, I guess, uh, I'd make a motion that we vote, that we vote yes to increase the compulsory attendance age from 16 to 18 as far as me voting on the Resolution Two.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Second it. Discussion, if you can maybe explain.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, that's what, the motion's been made.
We're not having anything in writing here, right?
Well, actually, everything was attached, um, to our last agenda for review. Um, and it was, um, it was said that we were going to discuss it at this meeting. So the reference is that, um, you know, where, you know, the realities of a 21st century, the increased need for higher levels of education. Um, and it improves the economic and social mobility across the lifespan and counters childhood poverty by enabling students experiencing poverty to stay in school longer and complete their education. It aims to, uh, an increase in compulsory attendance. An increase in compulsory attendance age, aims to reduce racial and class disparities, and that economic statistics show high school dropouts are more likely than graduates to be poor, unemployed, and wind up in jail. And it's our responsibility to ensure all children in the Commonwealth receive a high-quality education.
LeBron Martinez.
Yes, this is interesting, because I can go back to probably 20 years ago. This issue came up by the community, concerned about their children being able to make a decision at 16 to drop out, and it's back at the table years and years ago, and that wasn't accepted back then to do so. I guess they had to hit the fan for people to find out that you have a higher dropout, in a sense of the effect that it has done in communities to determine that. But it also makes me wonder, when we then look at statistics, because as the state would look at us, is a... It's a catch-22 to hold someone up to the age of 18, who now deciding that wants to drop out, how good is... You know what I mean? Is it beneficial? And I respect that. I think that I am kind of torn by this, right? Proposition, or whatever we want, you know, they're considering it, and they had to see it based on the economic, and I think they have to see it, because the employee... The employer-employee ratio has affecting them and finding, not only the issues of our youth or being incarcerated in a timing that the first thing they go in front of a judge is, they ask you, "Have you completed high school?" They need to know, and the statistics are being proven that they're not, and that's why they're ending up in jail. That it's coming up, but I want us to think about, how is that going to affect us? Is it going to hinder us, right? On numbers of youth who either decide to still drop out before, regardless of their age, you know what I'm saying? Because before, the window was, "Oh, I'm going to wait until I'm 16, and I'll drop out." And now, how do... My concern is the retention. How do we think about retention forward versus what the choice has been to this day? I'm not in favor of them dropping out. Let me just say that. I want to clarify that. But I'm just saying, we also need to look at, is that going to hinder us in the numbers when you have youth that we have to retain to the age of 18?
Mrs. Wilson.
I just wanted to clarify that this is with parental... Without parental consent. So, currently, students can drop out at 16 without parental consent. So, moving it to 18 would be that... The student cannot just make the decision without the parental consent, like it is now, where it could turn 16, and they're like, "Okay, I can work full-time. I can, you know, I got it made." Situation. So, it's just moving it to 18, because then they are a legal adult, and so I think that's where the discussion was in line with that.
Ms. Willian.
Thank you. Yeah, just to follow up on this, LeBron Martinez, now, there's no perfect answer for this. I mean, you can't fit someone's worldview and world situation in a paragraph of a law. Okay, I mean, every person is more valuable than that. Okay, so, we're trying to pigeonhole everyone's specific situation into a paragraph. You know, I know people that were forced to quit school for various reasons. We have alternative programs that have been very successful, that we're encouraging students to get back into school. So, I agree, I don't want anyone to drop out. But just to pigeonhole them into a law, I don't really agree with that. I wish it said 17 and not 16, but I won't support this.
Tinsley Williams?
18 sounds better, because they have a chance to change their minds. If a student is 16 years old, they're not sure what they want to do. And so, if it moved up to 18, they might even change their minds and stay. But if it's easy for them, "While I'm 16, I'm out of here." Sometimes, we can't make things too easy to do. That's just my take on it.
Izaza.
Why assume that the MAC has done some kind of research about the consequences of this move, or not?
Yes, it stated... It talks about that there was some economic statistics show high school dropouts are more likely to graduate to be poor, unemployed, and wind up in jail. There's a growing body of research indicates that increasing the minimum school leaving age to 18 not only increases high school graduation rates, but also significantly improves the life outcomes of students who otherwise would have become dropouts.
Anybody else? You want to read the motion again, before we take a vote?
The motion was to... The motion is to approve voting yes, allowing me to vote yes on Resolution 2, increasing the compulsory attendance age.
From 16 to 18. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, I think you have to confirm your reasons for abstaining, right? Okay. So, we have one... Six, yays, two nays, one abstention.
Okay, so it passes.
But it passes.
Moving on to Resolution 3. These... The following ones are going to be resolutions on student safety. So, the safety and well-being of our students, teachers, and staff is our top priority in schools, and keeping them safe from the threat of gun violence should be the responsibility of all adult stakeholders in each of our school sites. Again, I'm just going to jump down now, because we should have reviewed. So, it be resolved that MAC recommends all districts direct their superintendent and staff to create an appropriate communication to parents and guardians that explains the importance of secure firearm storage to protect children and teens from unauthorized access to unsecured firearms and their legal obligations consistent with Massachusetts Safe Storage Law. Furthermore, be it resolved that MAC urges other communities to work with their local law enforcement agencies, health agencies, and nonprofit organizations to collaborate and increase efforts to inform district parents and guardians of their obligations regarding secure storage of firearms in their homes and vehicles. So, I would be making a motion that by voting yea, you are authorizing me to vote yes as the district's delegate.
On the district's delegate on...
At the MAC, where I'm going to the conference, for the voting.
Okay, so, the motion's on the table. I think Mr. Calamore just seconded it. Discussion? Ms. Willian.
Does it ever end? You know, does it ever ends? You know, the schools are, you know, we're their parent. Now, we're obligated to, you know, to, you know... We're obligated to, you know, teach the parent, you know, how to score guns, you know? Are we obligated to, you know, teach the pros and cons of acid rain, or, you know, the rise in tides? I mean, is there ever an end to what we have to do here as a school committee? You know, we're more from five minutes ago on MCAS scores, and now we're solving the problems of the world. So, I'll be voting no on this, too.
Yep, and Mr. Kennedy, before I call on you, just quickly, just to remind all the committee members that what I'm seeing is... Wilson is going as a delegate on our behalf to this event, where she's going to be voting on resolutions, and so, out of transparency purposes, it sounds like to me she's just looking for guidance and directive. None of this goes into effect, obviously. It just brings... It gives her the confidence in her vote over there, representing us, which I appreciate. Thank you so much, Ellie, for facilitating. So, just so everybody knows, it's not like, you know, but to your point, yeah, I get that. It's like, all right, well, there's something else, and something else, but... Mr. Kennedy.
Okay. We currently live in a time where guns are one of the number-one threats to children, specifically in schools. I think that Holyoke Public Schools, I personally haven't seen a lot compared to the rest of the country, but we do currently live in a time where it's a danger... It's a dangerous place for kids to be. Schools are a dangerous place for kids to be. Gun violence is a huge issue in this country. So, as the leaders of this city, as the leaders of this district, I think that we should be doing everything in our power, the power that the citizens of Holyoke elected us to do, to protect our kids from that... From that, I guess you could... I think some people are calling it an epidemic, gun epidemic. With that being said, I personally don't think that, you know, saying, "Oh, this is how you safely store your firearm" is going to be the solution to this problem. I think it's a step, but I think that we should also maybe encourage the MAC to maybe do a little something more than just, you know, hand out a flyer and say... And say, "Store your firearm safely." Because guns are a huge issue in schools, huge issue in the United States. And so, yes, I do think that this is a proper step, and Ms. Wilson, I would support this vote yes, but I also think that we should encourage more.
It's an endorsement for metal detectors? Mr. Calamore, did you have... Any other comment discussion on motion? Doctor?
I agree that more has to be done, but I also know that our superintendent has a lot of things to do, and this would be one more communication that may not necessarily be as effective as other communications from the superintendent, given that a lot of people are going to go in the... This is my right of being able to do this, and other conflicts that we may not necessarily want from the community, so just put for that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So, I got three noes, and the rest are ayes. You got those? Oh, three noes. Me, Dr. Yelly River clone, Ms. Willian, other nays. Rest are yays.
Can I... Can I ask a question?
Ms. LeBron Martinez?
Yeah, quickly. So, she's only asking from us, she's getting the vote from us to go forward with what, you know, we voted as a body, but she's still going to go in front of another group, who probably then voted either a yea or no on it, right?
Yeah.
So, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're making the final vote here.
Right.
And, you know... I know that they're looking at what's happened in the country as a whole, and they're trying to come to a, you know, a conclusion, or concise decision of proposing ideas to prevent the future of our district schools of ever encountering themselves in this risk of children bringing guns to school. So, I understand that this is not the last vote. They're going to have to vote, and if that other group doesn't vote unanimously, then there's not a vote anyway, so...
And although, this is a very valuable conversation, because although the majority passed, so she'll get to go back and vote, but they will be having discussions, and I'm sure Ms. Wilson's going to be expressing the viewpoints of the board. You know, hey, yeah, although the majority of our school board voted yes, these are some things that came up, and it'll allow them to reconcile from their, more or less, you know, their discussion. So, it's... Here, we have on record the conversation, votes taking place. She goes back, gives them the feedback. That's just the process, so it's not... Ms. Wilson, then Dr. Yelly River.
So, I do vote. I don't necessarily speak to the matter. Typically, those who speak are looking to get clarification, like on the first one, what's a legitimate mean, that type of clarification, or people try to add something on or tweak it. And so, yeah, so I would just be voting based upon how, you know, we as a collective body are providing input for me to vote.
Dr. Yelly River clone.
And I also want to say, having been in the delegate assembly, that a lot of amendments happen, and then the resolutions may not look at all like what we voted. So, I would like to make sure that Ms. Wilson knows that she, as the delegate, has the freedom of looking at the resolution and then voting according to what she sees at the meeting at that point in time.
Yes. Yep, thank you.
Any other comments, discussion?
I have seven more. The next is for School Bus Stop Armed Surveillance Act and Enforcement Penalties, Resolution 4. There is approximately, throughout the 100-day school year sample results from the National Association for State Directors of Public Transportation Services, basically found that motorists illegally pass stopped school buses. There are 41.8 million violations per year. So, this is... They're saying that there's technological advances that now made public digital video violation detection monitoring systems that can detect drivers failing to stop, and that penalties for passing a stopped school bus utilizing these digital videos violation monitoring system need to be commensurate with the same penalties imposed for such actions if witnessed by a police officer. Therefore, it's resolved that the MAC calls on the Massachusetts Legislature to enact legislation to pass into law the ability for cities and towns to install on all school buses live digital video detection monitoring systems for the purpose of enforcing violations against the owner of their motor vehicle whose vehicle failed to stop for a school bus when required to do so by law.
That's your motion.
So, my motion would be allowing me, you know, I'm going to say the motion is for a yes vote, for me to vote yes on behalf of the Holyoke Public Schools District.
Seconded by Orlando. Discussion?
Yep.
Gladys, and then Ronnie.
So, and the way it was read is that the schools, our district, will be responsible for the system on the buses, though?
Is that what I understood? So, it reads that cities and towns, the ability for cities and towns to install. So, yes, it probably would fall under the responsibility of the district if we wanted to put these into place, but also, it's allowing that we'd like the legislature to allow the live video feed to... What was it, to... Be able to do the violations, just like a police officer stop would.
Okay, so, I'm not against that. What I'm against is that, where's that going to come from, our budgets as a local, you know, district? That's the only concern that I have, because this is going to be costly, and as it is, we, you know...
Our budget's over $10 million, just for buses.
So, I mean, that's not... That's the only part that I'm not comfortable in voting on. And again, voting, I will vote for you to go and ask the question.
Oh, absolutely!
No problem. But my concern is that if that's going to come back to a district who's responsible for all these buses that are not even ours, that's a responsibility to those companies, so, thank you.
Can I just respond?
Go for it.
It doesn't say that we are required to have it. So, I just want to clarify, it says that we... It's asking that we put this in place, and that if we want to, we could use it. It's not saying it's a requirement. So, there's no obligation for us to do this and have this additional cost.
All right, so I have Orlando, I have Mr. Calamore, and then there's... Go ahead, Orlando.
I then suggest that perhaps you should recommend that that meeting that the state puts that in their own budget.
Mr. Calamore.
If the bus company feels as though they need it, let them put it on. But it shouldn't be on the taxpayers of the city.
Ms. Willian.
Thank you, yeah. I just want to incur with Ms. LeBron Martinez that just, you know, the cost effect for this. It might, you know, again, we don't have to do it. Well, we don't have to do it, why are we even talking about it? You know, I'm assuming someone from Wellesley or Newton, you know, sponsored this, so...
A pebity.
Thank you, close enough. Yeah, you know, again, our transportation budget, we're, we're constantly trying to, to fund that. So again, it's just another unfunded mandate from the state, so I'll be voting no for this, thank you.
Tinsley Williams?
Mayor Josh, um is there a way that we can ask the state to pay for that? Is there, not a grant, but is, what can we do about it?
There are plenty of ways, no guarantee that they'll do it, though. There's no mechanism, so, you know, it's just, it's, you know, if this, if there was a law that passed, can there be potentially at ti- that time from the legislatures making available resources to districts to help install? Sure. Um, there are operational oversight, I'm, I'm sure of the technology and to the point, it will, I can't imagine that it's not gonna increase our, you know, it'll increase costs and our budget's already over ten million. Um, and I don't even see, like, if, if we wanted to require this in our next, like, I think with this resolution or not, if this was, I'm pretty sure we can work with our depart- like, if that's something we really wanted to do and technology we wanna invest it in, we can work with them and there's a cost to it, obviously, they're gonna expect, but I don't see how they would say no, but. All points very well taken. Mr. Calamore, did you wanna say something? Joellehan, Orlando, okay. Is your mic on?
If we don't ask for the funds, how will we get it? See, we can't sit around and hope and think, we need to go, maybe take a delegation to them. Take names, whatever, and just ask for the money, and just let them flat out tell us no or yes.
What?
So I, I really feel I must reiterate that this is not mandating our city to do this. This is not saying that we have to put this in place. Um, it's saying that, you know, this, there are significant safety concerns when, you know, vehicles pass school buses and what we're asking the legislature to do by voting yes for this, we're asking them to change it so that if you did happen to have that video, that digital programming, that the digital programming then could be turned over to the police and this, the vehicle owner would be fined for that violation. There is no mandate in this stating that we have to have it, so I, I just really need to reiterate that. It's basically saying that, you know, let's say we, you know, someone wins the lottery and donates this equipment. Well, now we could use that equipment in order to, you know, process violators and not just have to, have it have to be when a police officer witnesses the violation.
Mr. Kennedy?
Um, if I may just add to Ms. Wilson's point here, the, the budget discussion would come later. The budget discussion would come after we get the, we get the uh mandating for, to offer it, to offer it, banning to offer it, and then if we decide we want it, then that discussion for budget would come way later, like over here. Um, this is currently, this is just asking, is it, is it a good idea to offer to the districts?
Any other discussion on the motion? Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Two nays. Got those? And keep in mind, we do have five, six, six other resolutions.
No, I think we're, we're ju- we're down to five, I miscounted before, thank you, we're on to Resolution Five. And it's about school finance, aligning taxing authority with the required local contribution. Whereas Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy, Section Two establishes a required local contribution, which defines a minimum appropriation for education, whereas one element of determining the required local contribution is local effort, effort from property wealth determined using a municipality's equalized valuation. And whereas the ability of municipalities to raise revenue is constrained by Proposition Two and a Half, which limits the increase in levy by two and a half percent plus new growth. And whereas, oh, I went too fast. Whereas the total statewide required local contribution in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two was six billion eight hundred twenty-seven million six hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred and fifty-seven. And in fiscal year, it was over seven billion, an increase of about three and a half million dollars. Whereas the total state required fund contribution was um over seven million. Um, and again, it was an incre- increase from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four of um five point five eight percent. Um, so it's basically saying that there be resolved that Massachusetts Association for School Committees calls for the enactment of legislation that would increase the municipality's levy limit by the amount of increase required local contribution in excess of two point five, granting the municipality the ability to raise local revenues mandated by Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy. I am not the finance person, so um I, I would like to, I will, I'll say, I'm going to ask the same thing I've asked for all of them. I'm gonna make a motion that um by a yea vote, you're authorizing me to vote yes in favor of this resolution.
Ms. Wellian?
Second.
Thank you.
Oh, that motion's been made, seconded by Mr. Calamore, thank you so much. Ms. Wellian, discussion?
I wish that was said and resolved that the state would fund local education on the state level, not looking for revenue from the taxpayers and, or one of the poorest communities in the state and looking for more revenue from the taxpayers. So a- again, I, I wish, I wish the state would fund our school systems, so I'll, I'll vote no for this, too.
So just to clarify, are we talking about giving flexibility to local governments to go above the, the, the prop? Two and a half levy limit?
So, I, right now, I think, you know, and I didn't do any research on this particular order, but based on what you read, this is basically saying, in a community like Holyoke, where we're only allowed to raise our taxes by two and a half percent plus growth, um, let's not make the local contribution required to meet minimum net school spending be greater than that. So with the Student Opportunity Act, we've had, uh, you know, our Chapter Seventy has been growing, but so has the local contribution, so it sounds like this order would kinda limit what that increase in local contribution would be from one year to the next.
I, I think I, following, so just, just folks understand, when we're at the levy limit, right, we, we, if we were to uh, if we didn't have enough to meet our needs and needed additional above that levy limit, then that's when Prop Two and a Half comes in. So if I'm understanding this correctly, and maybe I'm wrong, if we need more above that Prop Two and a Half, because I can't do more than that above the levy limit, is this looking for flexibility to levy even more than two and a half, or?
I believe it does.
Um, excuse me, yeah, I just speak of, she mentioned the equalized valuation of the town, so he'd sell the, you know, the, you know, what's Boston's equalized valuation, which versus Horseyoys, what's Cambridge's? You know, I keep going, I'm picking on these, these communities, you know, so again, that's where these, you know, I, I'm just talking off the cuff here, I'm assuming these resolutions are originating from, from those Boston suburbs, you know, where we really had nothing in common with them.
Arlington.
See?
Any other discussion on the motion?
I was right!
So it is asking us, so it basically is saying that, and I'm just gonna clarify this. Um, it, it calls for the enactment of legislation that would increase the municipality's levy limit. So we, so by the amount of increase required by local contribution in excess of the two point five granting, so we would, a vote in yes of this would allow us to increase more than two point five to meet educational needs. That's what I'm interpreting as.
So what I just heard, though, so whatever our local, because we gotta fund our local contribution, that, that's like, we, we have to do it. But if, if, if we're at a pinch at the levy limit and our local contribution makes our budget exceed that limit, if we were to exceed, we can only go, we can only go to the voters and ask for a Prop Two and a Half override, for an override. What this saying is like, whatever that difference is, that, yeah, so, that's messy. It's either, it's either we cut things at other things or, you know, flexibility like that, the, you know, the consequence, yeah, is raise of taxation. Okay, I see where we're going.
Yeah, I, um, I just wanna make sure, because the public is watching this, and this is gonna get kinda
Right.
nasty out there to, to vote it, and let's make it clear, this is not a decision that is really making locally. This is a proposition being made by this um organization, the Mass A A S.
M A S C.
That is asking um our representative, our delegate, who's gonna go and vote, and actually a discussion, because there was others who may vote against it, and it doesn't go nowhere, so let's make it clear. And on understanding, especially the tax-based situation in our community, that people are gonna panic, this is not gonna hit us until it bolt anyways, was voted on a ballot question if we ever had to go there. So I just wanna make it clear, because I don't wanna, you know, I'm trying to engage in my community, I don't wanna get my doors closed, that people think that we're voting here to bring taxes up. So let's make it clear, um, this is not a vote that is locally yet, and it's just for her to go and be able to be a delegate at this particular organization, thank you.
Thank you, Gladys. Any other discussion on the motion? Oh, Mrs. Wilson? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? No. Those that say no, just raise your hands, just so I can get the count. Opposition? You got it?
So do we, what, what was the?
Ayes. I was like, we had four nays. And uh one yea, two yea, three yea, four yea.
So if you're voting yes, you're authorizing me to vote in favor of, hold on, let me go back to where I was, I apologize. You're, you're asking me to call for the legislation to, um, that would allow us to increase our levy limit by voting yes, you're asking me to call for our legislation to increase our municipalities levy limit by the amount of increase of the required local contribution in excess of two point five, granting the municipality the ability to raise local revenue. So you're, can I?
So those that were in favor, just keep your hand up.
I, 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 I resent my vote, because that's not what I'm, I'm understanding that we've been voting on, is to allow her to go forward in front of the other group of delegates to decide later on on a vote. And we're, and if that's the case, there's certain things here that I would take back.
It's a yes vote.
So I asked for a vote of yes in order to me vote
In her motion.
Vote in favor of this resolution.
So I resent my vote.
So maybe for this.
Motion to reconsider, there was a second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed of reconsidering?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so on the motion.
It was a four for four anyway, so we were a tie.
Alright.
Back on the motion.
So the motion is that by voting yes, you are saying that I'm in, that our district is in support of enact, en- enacting the legislation to increase the municipality's levy limit by the amount of increase of required local contribution in excess of two point five percent, granting the municipality the ability to raise local revenues.
Seconded.
Yep.
Tell you about Mr. Calamore. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, and if you could just keep your hands up for me for a moment. Okay, any opposed? No. Everybody's no. Show of hands if you're a no vote, I'm assuming it's no, because nobody voted yes. So unanimously, no.
Alright. Oh, in support of uh legislation to improve fiscal health for our rural districts, this was sponsored by Deerfield, Sutherland, Sunderland, Whately, and Frontier Regional. So um, you know, regional school districts are facing daunting threats to their financial stability, and the Commonwealth has rightly touted the state significant in research increase in education funding, and so basically, we are asking, I'm trying to follow here, sorry, guys. Um, so, hold on, whereas rural school districts have closed, regionalized, and shared services in an effort to remain viable and service their students. So, um, Massachusetts Association of School Committees urges the legislature to pass comprehensive legislation encompassing all recommendations from the Legislative Commission on Fiscal Health of Rural Schools Report, A Sustainable Future for Rural Schools. So the motion is, if you uh would be a vote of yes, is in favor of me voting yes, that we are urging the legislature to pass a comprehensive legislation encompassing all recommendations from the Legislative Commission on Fiscal Health of Rural Schools Report. No, I don't have a copy of it. And uh for a sustainable future of rural schools.
Okay, so that's the motion, is there a second? Okay, seconded by Dr. Yadilet Rivera Cologne, discussion? Alright, no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
One. Show hands, aye. We need it for our minutes. So me, Gladys, Dr. Yadilet, Saza, Calamore, and Ms. Wilson are all yea.
Nays?
Nays? You are a nays.
Number seven, fully adjusting Chapter Seventy aid for inflation, and this is by the Everett School Committee. Whereas Chapter Seventy of the, of general laws provide a structure for allocation of school aid based on the foundation budgets that reflect the needs and costs of Massachusetts school districts. Whereas Chapter Two, Chapter Seventy, Section Two defines the Foundation Inflation Index limits each annual adjustment to no more than four point five when inflation exceeds that amount. So whereas application of the limit or cap on Foundation Index in the fiscal years two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four has reduced the base used to calculation, to calculate foundation budget for fiscal year two thousand five and future years by about six percent below what it needs to maintain the purchasing power of Massachusetts schools. And I'm going to segue up, that it's resolved that M A S A, M A S C calls on the Massachusetts Legislature to advance legislation mandate, mandating Inflation Index catch-ups to Chapter Seventy Foundation Aid that fully account for realized inflation that has occurred since the passage of the Student Opportunity Act, and be it further resolved that M A S C work with Massachusetts Legislature to ensure in future years where realized inflation is above the four point five annual inflation cap in subsequent years, Inflation Index catch-ups are made to Chapter Seventy Aid. And realized inflation is used in the formulas to cap, to calculate Chapter Seventy Aid perpetually, in perpetuity, perpetuity, that's a good one. So a vote of yes would be allowing me to call on the legislature to do the catch-ups for Foundation Seventy, for Chapter Seventy Foundation Aid, and then also in the future to do Inflation Index catch-ups.
Alright, that's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Tinsley Williams, discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Wellian.
Thank you, this is a good one. I mean, whether the, the state has a fund and to, to fund all these, you know, that's, that's another matter. I know we just had, you know, um, the McMahon Boiler I know we just had, you know, um, the McMahon boiler cost just went from a million dollar cost to, to six million in a couple of years. So that's, that's an inflation right there, you know. Again, does, does the state have the revenue to, to fund these resolutions? I'm going to vote yes, but my guess is they don't. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Next.
Two more.
Fully adjust, oh, no, I read, read that one, sorry. Chapter, uh, sorry, Resolution Eight, Equitable Funding for Non-Regional School Districts With High Transportation Costs. This is sponsored by Plymouth School Committee. So whereas many non-regional school districts face significant financial burdens due to the extensive transportation costs and longer routes or routes required to serve their students and non-regional school districts do not receive financial reimbursement benefits as regional districts do, which creates an imbalance in funding. They're looking for equitable financial support. So, um, therefore it is resolved that the state recognizes the financial challenges faced by many non-regional school districts due to their higher transportation costs and longer routes. The state acknowledges that non-regional school districts should have access to financial support similarly to regional districts when costs are extraordinary. A special fund shall be established to provide financial assistance to non-regional school districts with higher transportation costs. This fund shall be known as the Extraordinary Roots Relief Fund. And the, uh, fund provides for, uh, used exclusively to offset transportation costs. Eligible non-regional school districts may apply for grants and there will be an oversight committee.
There's a motion. Is there a second on the motion?
Did everybody, did somebody seconded already?
Seconded it. Ms. Willian. Discussion. Ms. Willian.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is, um, uh, a good order. I know Plymouth, if they're not number one, uh, I think they're the largest community area-wise in the state. If they're not number one, they're in the top three, but I believe they're number one. So I'm assuming that's why they're filing this, just because of the distance between, between the schools. But any more revenue that we can get for our own transportation, I'm for. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Next.
All right, the next is for Vocational and Technical School Group. It's Resolution Nine, the MSBA Grant Evaluation for Chapter Seventy Four. So Chapter Seventy Four Vocational and Technical and Agricultural High Schools incur higher costs to build Chapter Seventy Four Educational Training Spaces. And MSBA currently assesses all school building projects of equal value. So vocational, technical and agricultural high school renovation, building costs are dispersed to sending districts impacting local budgets. Therefore, it's resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature and the MSBA to create an evaluation tiered system to separately assess the cost of one, elementary, two, comprehensive high schools, and three, vocational, technical and agricultural high schools resulting to true cost reimbursement for each school category. So a vote of yea. The motion is if you vote yea, you will be asking me to vote in favor of this resolution for a three-tiered, um, evaluation, uh, tiered system and, uh, resulting in true cost reimbursement for each of the category.
Ms. Willian's motion seconded by Mr. Calamore. Discussion.
I would say that, um, you know, vocational education is very important to us as a district. Um, and if we were to, you know, remodel or build, um, you know, I would like the actual cost being used to be considered and not just one for a, a traditional school.
Mr. Kennedy, then Ms. Willian.
I, I agree that vocational education is very important, but it's also, it, it can also be kind of a strain on the district and it'll, um, you know, the, the cost of it, we may bring, uh, an, a thing, oh my gosh, we may bring a shop to our superintendent, let's just say, and say, hey, we want this and he said, well, we can't afford that. Um, so we might, you know, this might benefit, um, the district in a major way and definitely benefit vocational education.
Ms. Willian, thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Yeah, I mean, this, this goes, goes back to the, again, just a common theme of the state not reimbursing the communities for the, the true costs of, um, the schools. I mean, communities are voting down schools because they can't, they can't afford them. You know, again, it goes back to that inflation, um, resolution that we just, um, voted on, you know, again, you know, the, the costs are just so escalating. I know the mayor, he knows that through, you know, any public works, public works projects, the same thing. So again, the state hasn't adjusted their, or their, they have adjusted their, their cost per, per square foot, but again, it's not the true cost. So again, we can vote to, um, vote yes for this resolution, but it just goes up to the state to, to having appropriate funds to provide the school districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willian. Any other discussion? Ms. Wilson? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Next.
Finally, Resolution Ten, which is really relevant based on our earlier discussions about vocational. So this is sponsored by the Tri-County Regional Vocational Technical High School. Um, it's the expansion in capacity in Chapter Seventy Four Vocational Technical Programming. So Massachusetts, um, Chapter Seventy Four Vocational Technical Schools are experiencing unprecedented applications for admissions and more students from their sending districts are being waitlisted. Students applying from sending districts being waitlisted, preventing non-member and school choice students from attending. There are seven, nine, oh, sorry, there are ninety-two schools in Massachusetts that have Chapter Seventy Four programs, but there are gaps across the Commonwealth where students do not have access to Chapter Seventy Four program schools. Chapter Seventy Four schools serve a higher percentage of students with I E Ps and five oh fours and who are more economically disadvantaged than their sending districts and Massachusetts is in need of more skilled trades worker to keep pace with both growth of industry and retirement of the current workforce. Therefore, it resolves that Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the governor and the legislature to support the expansion of capacity at current Chapter Seventy Four schools and to work with districts that let access to vocational technical schools to create programs. It's further resolved that, uh, calls upon the legislature to convene a special commission to consider changes to the current law and regulations relating to the overall authority of Massachusetts School Building Authority, Alternative Overall Financial Structures, Stanzers for Project Eligibility, Appropriate Financial Assistance Based on the Nature of the School in the Projects Being Considered, Potential Differential Requirements for Elementary, Middle Schools and Comprehensive High Schools and Vocational, Technical and Agricultural Schools and other such matters as affects vocational and technical education. So vote of yes would be asking to support the expansion and capacity of current Chapter Seventy Four schools.
Next to motion.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Seconded by Gladys LeBron Martinez. Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Oh, is there anybody else opposed? So move.
Thank you.
Thank you so much and.
Thank you, Ellie.
Ellie, I do appreciate like you, I mean, I know we just spent a lot of time going through that, but it's all important stuff. She's going as a delegate and she cares about what this body thinks and feels. So that was the feat, I hope that was the feedback you needed to, to help you.
Absolutely was the feedback I was looking for. So thank you.
Good. Before we dive into announcements, I saw Mr. Kennedy's hand. Did you have something to say, Mr. Kennedy?
No, I was just going to thank Ms. Wilson for taking all of our, um, opinions into account or as our representative.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. And I, um, I, I was just thinking in the middle that, uh, I know Ms. Rosalie Tinsley Williams, you did bring something up that's not on our agenda and I didn't mean to cut you off about Dean and sports. Do you want us to put that on our next agenda or do you want to have a side conversation with Soto about it afterward? I don't want to get into it. I just want to make sure you're hurt.
I talked to him a couple of games ago. Our students got hurt. They had to use, uh, a medical person from the other school and I just wondered if we had ours. That's all.
So do you want to just have a, or do you want to put it on the agenda?
Yes.
You're going to have a conversation with Soto or agenda?
Uh, on the agenda. Oh, for war, but next time.
Okay. Um, I'll let the vice chair know. Thank you. Uh, announcements?
Yeah, real quick, uh, they're in your packet, but we do have the trunk or treat, uh, CPAC. It's usually a great event. It's going to be at Holy Oak High this Thursday, October 29th, actually Tuesday, October 29th. Tomorrow. Uh, from six to seven o'clock. Um, as our wonderful student rep, uh, mentioned in his announcement, uh, we have the Holy Oak High School Theater. Ms. Nelson is missing, going to be on November 13th, 14th and 15th, and that's going to be at Holy Oak High School at six thirty. So encourage anybody from the community to support our students and support our Holy Oak High School Theater and purchase your tickets and go see, uh, our wonderful talented students on one of those three nights. We have, uh, our DPAC meeting, our District Parent Advisory Committee, uh, meeting November 13th, uh, via Zoom and that's at six o'clock. And our Middle School Building Committee is going to be November 14th, also via Zoom at six o'clock. Um, and as always, we, uh, encourage anybody from the community and, uh, anybody from this committee interested in watching any of our student athletes perform. Uh, for your convenience, we have linked in the calendar, uh, that includes our schedule of all of our, uh, student athletes.
Thank you so much. Um, any other announcements, by the way? Ms. Willian.
Thank you. Thank you for the calendar. I appreciate that. I know Mr. Calamore does too. Um, yeah, we had the, the Holy Oak High Athletic Hall of Fame, uh, was held this weekend. Not sure if Mr. Soto attended.
Yep.
And okay, just, um, I heard it was a good event. We had an ad in the, in the program for the entire school committee and we had the entire body, so we added the newest member. But so we're all represented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ca, Calamore, Mr. Uh, Mr. Willian. Mr. Calamore.
Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calamore. Um, any other announcements before we adjourn? Uh, Ms. Rosalie Tinsley Williams, you want to close us out with a poem?
Yes, I'll make it quick. Um, in 2021, I was honored, uh, to submit this poem in the graduation, uh, high school book. Um, it's called Dean Tech, Don't Look Back. If you're looking for a high school that's really keen, don't forget to check out Dean. And if you're looking for kings and queens, look no further, they are here at Dean. Moms and dads knows it's tough. The secret to learning is to never give up. Just remember, if you want to learn, stay in school, study hard and your credits you'll earn. When life gets tough and you know that it will, remember your academic and technical skills. We love our students and we love this school and wouldn't you say that's pretty cool? Now listen, students, please don't be late. We want you all to graduate with your talent. Don't give up the fight and don't forget awards and show night. Remember to add to the equation, the rising stars and their celebration. Dean Tech, keep on going, don't get slack. We want you to know we've got your back. This poem is over and you know the rules. Just wanted to say, God bless our schools. Thank you for listening.
Brought to you by yours truly, Rosalie Tinsley Williams. Thank you so much for sharing that. A motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.